Boulder County Commissioners, now in session. We'll begin with prayer, followed by the pledge. Mr. Jones, would you leave some prayer, please?
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given us. God, this day of so many things going on. We thank you, Lord, for our friends, our neighbors. We thank you for our health and safety today. God, we remember those today that have lost so much more than we could even imagine today. We pray that you would be near and dear to their families, God, that you would touch each and every heart in each and every life. God, be with us today as we do our best to make decisions that are going to help and affect each and every resident and the potential visitors to Franklin County. Father, we thank you for this time. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Senator Rubio has not made it yet?
Yes, not as yet as the pair that way. So I guess if we can continue with the agenda, we'll interrupt. I'll let you know when he gets here, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Danny Collins, Duke Energy. Please come forward.
Well, that's a first. But thank you all and thank the commission. I'll give you all an update where we are with things. As you know, lights are coming on in Franklin County. At this point, we are in the cleanup stage. There are a few customers still out. We're still working those through until they're done. The east side of the county, by and large, is complete, except for those customers who had damage to their homes and still need some work done before we can get them hooked back up. We'll be ready to do that soon as their work is complete. Little bit left over in Appalachian East Point. We're still waiting on a repair at our substation on St. George Island, but the work on the island is nearing completion. So as soon as the substation is ready to go, those customers will be up very quickly. So there'll be very little bit or very little left to do on St. George Island once the substation work is complete. So that's where we are. Most of our work as a company right now is left over in Gulf County and Bay, as you may expect in Mexico Beach. So we're in a good place here in Franklin County and be happy to address any issues you may have.
Do you have a timeline on the St. George Island substation?
We're expecting by the end of Wednesday to have St. George done. It may happen sooner. I just don't know. It just depends on how quickly that work can be completed.
That's good enough because a lot of people off St. George is asking, you know, I tried to get it out there. Everybody didn't know the substation was messed up. I did, of course, go into the EOC, knew the substation had problems. I knew you all were going to work on it. I'd have to apologize publicly to Duke Energy for what I said out there at the EOC the other day. They said, "We'll have power back by Tuesday." I said, "Man, if you really looked at what I seen, well, I got a little crated this morning because they got it going on." And as that round of applause shows you how much the community appreciates that, it was a long four days using a generator. Went back to the old days, actually, no hot water, taking a cold shower, you know, everybody doing the best they could do. So we do appreciate everything you all have done for us. The response is, I don't know how you coordinate all those trucks and where they're supposed to be. I was asking somebody the other day, I said, "How do they know who they're paying? How do they even know who's here?"
They let us...
This is not your first show, of course. You all responded to many hurricanes in different areas of the country, so I'm sure you have logistics down. It's just mind-boggling how you keep up with all that and all these different companies that have come in to assist you all. It's mind-boggling to me how you keep up with all that stuff. But I'm glad you had them here. Duke has responded real well for this county, in my opinion. And I'll let some of the other commissioners, I think, have some comments for you, Danny.
Go Duke! Go Duke! It's the first time, I've been here all my life. It's the worst storm we had, and it's the fastest energy company ever got these lights back on. Y'all done a tremendous job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins, the other day, I told you publicly, and I think, was the lady there, was that the CEO for Duke or who was that?
She's our state president, Catherine Stempian.
State president, okay. Well, you know, I am blown away by how quickly y'all were able to do it. I'm not trying to reiterate what everybody else is saying, but I was kind of like the chairman. I'm like, when I was driving through the county from Carabel this way, I'm like, this is going to be a while. This is a lot. And so I'm simply amazed that y'all were able to do what you did in the amount of time you've done it in.
Mr. Sanders?
I watched y'all in Carabel. One would set the pole, leave, one would come set the wire, leave, one would set the transformer. Y'all had a line just from working, and we sure appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Danny, I'm probably one of your biggest advocates, if you know. My condolences goes out to Jake Reed's family.
Thanks, ma'am.
They sad, but we want to thank you. You said something the other day at the EOC that meant a lot to me, and I was doing it before you said to do it. And that was to go and thank them. Just thank them, giving them a handshake, a look in the eye, and just thank them. I've met linemen from Iowa, Kentucky, Indiana, North Carolina, I mean, South Carolina, and they've got their own problems up there, and Texas and Oklahoma, and like that one guy said, and one from Mexico. I'm not going to tell you who he was, but I want to tell you, thank you for your fast response because getting the power back on makes people feel that their life is coming back a little bit to normal. And I, as one who stayed during the storm, because I have always stayed, I can tell you, my life will never be normal again. Seeing they're listening for five hours to wind howling and all that, but then I look to the north, to the east, and to the west, and see people worse off than what we are. And you know what I say? We are blessed and highly favored in Franklin County, that even though we haven't had the damage that we've had, we're not as bad as what some places are because we did not have lost supply, that we know of. But Danny Collins, you're great in my book, and you remember that after I'm retired, I still got your telephone number.
Yes, you do.
Okay?
And if I could just say one last thing. This is a public meeting, and I want the public to know that we would not have been able to restore as quickly as we were able to without the cooperation of this county, the city of Appalachia Cola, the city of Carabel. Our staging site in Appalachia Cola is owned by the county. When we needed it, they said, "Take the whole thing," and we have filled it up. The same thing for the city of Carabel, they gave us access to the whole thing. Will Kendrick Park in Carabel, the whole thing. And the city of Appalachia Cola gave us access to their complex as well. Without the ability to have trucks here, we brought in sleeper trailers to house these workers working here. They're commuting from somewhere else. Every minute they're commuting is a minute that they're not working in this county. So without you all doing that, we'd still have a lot more folks without light. So thank you guys for allowing us to do that and speeding up our restoration. We really do appreciate it.
Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you for coming in this morning, Danny, and updating the commission.
Just got one question. So Danny, we want you to stay here as long as possible. We appreciate all that you've done, as I always said, but is there a timeline for when you might be out of the airport?
Um...
So we know what the future of the airport timeline is.
Yeah, we can discuss that offline. I don't have an update right now. We're still in restoration mode, but...
We want you to stay as long as you need.
Yeah, it won't be too much longer. We can figure that out.
Thank you again, Danny. Senator Rubio made it.
No, sir, I've not seen him yet.
We'll go into public comment. Please raise your hand, state your name for the record. Come forward, state your name for the record.
Rick Watson, Franklin County Tax Collector. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I wanted to let you know that the Carabel office is open to handle title and registration. We've got the flow van coming in at the high school at 10:00 a.m. They'll be here in Appalachia today. We'll be able to handle driver's license issues and registration and title and tag. Tomorrow, they'll be at East Point. So we should have our office up and running tomorrow at the courthouse.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Did you mean all High School and South Beach? Yes. All High Schools, yes. And then East Point.
Come on, Ms. La Paz. State your name for the record.
Good morning. Brenda La Paz, Mayor, City of Carabel, and I'm just here to report real quick on the situation in the city of Carabel. City Hall is open, but not open for normal business today. It'll be open for normal business tomorrow. The Carabel Airport is closed for normal operations. It is receiving emergency supplies there, and Duke is staging there, and the state, EOC, is staging there. Restaurants are still regrouping. There's a couple of restaurants open, but the majority are still trying to put together their supplies again. The Carabel IGA is open for regular hours. They received a meet delivery yesterday. Dairy's coming later this week. The Dollar General in Carabel is open for regular hours. Our two hardware stores are open for regular hours. Centennial Bank is open for regular hours. Post Office is open. Mr. Watson just reported on the tax collector's office. Both gas stations are open, their delis are open, the Landark Market is open. I'm not sure if they have gas there. Our motel rooms are booked, booked for the next few weeks. Weems Medical East is open. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. We have a representative from the SBA that's going to be set up here on October the 17th at the Carabel Library. I coordinated that with Ms. Lisa Lance. She's been very helpful. Thanks to her. On the boiled water notice, Carabel, East Point Water District and Water Management Services got together and sent their water samples to one lab. The lab that they normally use was damaged in Tallahassee, and they should have a report back this midday on the boiled water notice, and we'll get that out. I want to thank the Franklin County EOC, Ms. Pam Brunel, and Jennifer, and Tress. We have had good communications through all of this, and I know they have worked theirself to the bone. And as well, to Duke Energy, we appreciate that, and we appreciate the support of the Franklin County Commissioners. When we needed dumpsters over there for perishable goods out of the IGA and Dollar General, Mr. Massey got that over there to us right away, and we appreciate it. I want to thank our city staff, and they remained on duty, full-time, and on standby, and they've worked diligently to help all of us. We appreciate it. Goes without saying, we need roadways, though. We certainly need some roadways back and forth. Eastern Franklin County is cut off whenever we have disasters like this. But we are, the point of distribution, I've been coordinating with the state EOC, Sergeant Sands, who's working with Ms. Pam Brunel. That's going to wind down shortly in Carabel and possibly in Landark at Chilis Hall as well. We've had, they won't be making any more deliveries for MREs or water there. Red Cross hot meals have been served in the Carabel, at the Carabel Firehouse the last four days, and today will be the last day for that. But we're picking ourselves up by the bootstraps, and we're going to be ready to assist and serve the public in Carabel. And thank you all.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Brunel.
Commissioner, if you, my pausing on public comments, as you see, U.S. Senator, Mr. Rubio is here.
Please come forward. Honorable Marco Rubio, Senator, U.S.
I got a little nervous. The last time I did this, I was doing land use and zoning as a young attorney in Miami, and I batted 50-50 on that, not too bad, but back then. I wish I was here under different circumstances and having lived through a number of storms, but nothing like this, but certainly Andrew down south and then some of the others. I know how difficult things are. I wanted to first thank, I know that the personnel, and you just heard the mayor talking about her city hall staff, and I think sometimes we forget that the men and women, you don't forget, but it's easy to forget for everybody else, that the men and women who are serving us in the midst of these events are victims of the storm themselves. They've lost their own homes, their families, lives have been disrupted, and yet they're out there serving us, and we're very grateful to them for what they do. They're true public servants to put the people that they serve ahead of their own interests in moments like that. We also want to thank the men and women who have responded from across the country, really, and from across the state. Just a minute ago, we thanked some folks from Orlando and Miami who'd come up and served some world-class barbecue out there. I think they have a permit. If not, I'm sure, you know, they'll get one. But it just reminds you, everywhere we've been here in northwest Florida, we've run into people from across the country and across the state who have responded, both firefighters, police officers, but also just everyday citizens that have responded in a time of need. I also think it's important to point out that public utilities, particularly Duke Energy and the power companies, done a fantastic job because without power, you realize pretty quickly, everything else doesn't work without it. And so just getting that back up will make all the difference in the world. Briefly, our role in this is three parts. The first is, as you know, in response to any event such as this, the lead agency is the state Emergency Operations Center in coordination with counties and cities, and the job of FEMA and the federal government is to provide whatever assistance the state needs. And I must say that up to this point, the President, the White House, FEMA, has not turned down a single request made up from the state. And our job is always to act as liaison or a conduit to make sure there's a request that instead of it taking eight hours to fulfill, maybe we can get it done in two because every minute, every hour counts. The second is on the individual side, and that FEMA does directly, not just FEMA, but the Small Business Administration and others, and we've worked hard with them in other events such as this, to either offer our own office personnel to assist theirs in helping individuals come forward and apply for aid, both FEMA, Small Business Administration, there's all sorts of federal resources available. And oftentimes, you know, they want you to apply online or call on the phone, but that becomes difficult when there's no power or communications. And a lot of times, people just do better filling it out on paper, knowing what the documents they need to do. So we're going to be there every step of the way to help individual Floridians apply for the assistance that they are eligible for under these federal declarations. And then there's the long-term of all this, and that involves the fact that governments often are victims of these storms, and many cases are. You know, it's a very lengthy, unfortunately, lengthy reimbursement process. There are items that'll need to be rebuilt that are not normally covered, that we've had to do in the past. That's why in Congress, we passed these disaster relief bills, and we're still living through it from last year. And the Florida Keys is an example where we still have multiple municipalities operating on lines of credit because even when the disaster relief is approved, they got to front the money and then get reimbursed, and that process has taken too long. So we are hoping that we can sort of shorten that process for you. And in particular, we're pushing on overtime costs that cities and counties assume. Those should not take long to, the reason why it takes long is they do these audits to make sure the money was actually spent. When it comes to paying overtime, that's pretty easy to do. Just ask the IRS if they got paid. You know, that money should be reimbursed pretty quickly because you can burn through reserves very fast. And then, as the damage assessment is done, you know, our job is to go back and make sure that we can get money in a disaster relief package to rebuild municipal and county functions that frankly, most counties and cities in the country do not have the wherewithal to withstand. And we'll be there every step of the way. But what I want you to know is you won't be forgotten. We'll walk with you every step of the way on this, and I'm confident. It'll be a long road and a hard road, but it's a road that will make you, you'll emerge from this stronger than you were going in, and that begins at the community level, neighbors helping neighbors, all the way up to Washington, D.C. And we just wanted you to know that not only are we thinking about you, but we are going to work for you, and we will be with you every step of the way. And if there's any pitfalls or any obstacles that stand in the way of getting the help you need, we'll be there to help you remove them and get it done. And so you will continue to be in our prayers, but you'll also be in our work. And I just thank you for hanging in there in such difficult times. And I want to close the way I began by thanking the men and women working here and for you who were out there right after that storm, not knowing in many cases what their own lives were going to look like over the next few weeks, but serving the people they work for. We are eternally grateful for the work they do on our behalf, and we want to thank them. God bless you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sit.
I do have a zoning matter, but we'll do that later. I'm kidding.
Yeah. On behalf of the people of Franklin...
That's a joke. If this is on press, it's a joke.
On behalf of the people of Franklin County and Boulder County Commissioners and all our staff, we appreciate you coming this morning. I don't want to let the public know that the Senator's been in contact with me multiple times. That's the reason he's here this morning, setting up for him to come in and address the public. I was told by Senator's staff that he'll have some field staff, as he told us a while ago, at the disaster recovery centers to help people work through some of these FEMA issues. Devil a lot with your chief of staff, Senator. And the people of Franklin County, it's good to know that we got people that will come down from the higher places down here to the lower places and address our community and the people, Senator. Also, I want to say real quick that I have seen this Senator, as a Republican Senator, cross party lines when he needs to to do what's right for the people. And if we had more of that in Congress and at the federal level, there would be a lot more done for this country. It's not about R and D, it's about doing what's right for the people. And that's what this board right here tries to do. Some of us are Republicans, some of us are Democrats. But all in all, it's about doing what's right for the people, and I'm going to commend you for crossing those party lines and doing what's right for the people when you feel like that's what you need to do. And I want to publicly recognize you for that.
Yes, sir.
And also recognize you for coming down here and speaking to my community, our community, and letting them know that you're here to help and lend a helping hand to the people to try to make this recovery a lot better than it could be. And again, thank you for coming in here today.
Well, thank you.
Let's give the Senator a round of applause.
I was just going to add, the one thing I've learned from hurricanes, sir, is that when the power's out, there are no Republicans or Democrats. It's just people without power.
That's great.
And so, but thank you for that.
Thank you for the board members, Mike.
Yes, sir.
I know it's a bad time, good time, bad time, but we got a bit of a problem. What it is, is we got people in the east end of the county, Alligator Point, and they are, their road hasn't been fixed. FEMA didn't give them the money from the last line cut up, and they can't get to their houses.
Yeah.
Can you get us some help there?
Yeah, so a couple of points on that. The first is, we got to find out where the money is because unfortunately, what happens, we have a two-step process, and that's what I talk about when it means the delays. The money is, first FEMA looks at it, makes sure the contract is right, you know, and then they send it to the state. The state runs the same process. So the first thing we have to do is find out where that money is. Is it still in DC? Is it sitting at the state EOC? And why hasn't it been dispersed? And that's what I mean by how this process takes so long. We are trying to shorten that timeframe because, as I said, we still have jurisdictions in the state that are operating two years behind events in terms of getting the money dispersed. And the smaller the jurisdiction, the harder it is for them to front this money, especially in a multiple storm situation. I mean, how do you budget for something like that? You can't. And so that's the part we're very concerned about. And when you add to that overtime costs and all sorts of other things, it gets problematic. We will most definitely look directly at that question, where that money is. But our pledge to you is, moving forward, and I had this meeting on Friday, I went to the headquarters of FEMA before I came down to Florida and Bay County, and one of the things I told them was, you have to understand, we, some of these jurisdictions that have been hit have money outstanding that in many cases, they've had to front or not even start from a year and a half ago, two years ago. And so that's what I mean by shortening this timeframe. We're all in favor of making sure that the money's being spent appropriately, but there's got to be a way to shorten that process because most municipalities cannot go a couple of years waiting for these things to happen. But we'll look directly at that and get you an answer on that as soon as today.
Thank you, sir.
And while the Senator's here, I just want to reiterate on Alligator Point Road, what's keeping us from getting the money so far is that it's still going through the studies that it's required today. So the EISs and stuff like that, that's still being done.
Yeah.
Who's talking out there? Who's talking out there in the audience?
I don't know. Excuse me, ma'am, you don't blurt out from the audience? You'll have to come forward when I get back to public comment? Okay.
But it sounds like it's been two years in waiting for it. So we'll jump all over that right now.
It has been two years, and one of our solutions that we offer is that the state of Florida come in and take the road. It's way beyond our ability to maintain. So with any assistance you can get, get the state of Florida to take this road, which was a state road 40 years ago, that's the solution we're looking for. Get the state in here to, if it didn't Gulf County...
To turn it over back to the state.
Turn it back to the state, absolutely.
But Senator, I'm glad that you reiterated in there that the process, the funding process is about two years behind.
It is.
It is, and that's what I said, you know, this happened in 2016.
So where it gets complicated is years like this where you're two years behind already, and then you have a second thing happen, and now you're even deeper in the hole. And that's what we tried to sort of, all this happened after Katrina. There was some contract problems, and so now they're, not only that, there was a seven-year clawback. So they could come back seven years later and say, "Hey, we don't think you spent the money right. You have to reimburse us." We just passed a law to lower that back to three. That whole process needs to be fixed, and we've been all over that, and we're going to continue to push them on that front.
Well, I can say you, tell you, I came into office in 1998, November of 1998, and right before I came into office, well, during the time that I was transferred in this office, we had something called Hurricane George, and it wiped out Alligator Point then. As I was coming in the office, and I said, "Lord, it's only, it's fitting time to give me another one going out of office." So, you know, you don't know Mother Nature. You can't determine that. But Senator, I've known you for a long time. He was considered my baby brother for eight years in the Florida house along with my brother, and you are a fine example of public service. And I want to thank you for coming down here and giving some information to the folks in Franklin County.
Well, we'll get your answers on those questions today.
You have any comments, Mr. Jones?
No, I'm good. I think I'll cover it.
Mr. Massey? Again, thank you for coming this morning.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to public comment now. Please raise your hand, be recognized. Come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's Grayson Shepard. I live here in Appalachia Cola. I want to reiterate what Commissioner Sanders says. We are blessed. Most of the people in this building rode that storm out right here, and a five-degree difference a day earlier, and we look like Mexico Beach. I think we all learned a lesson. I think when the powers that be say y'all need to get out, I think a lot of us are going to listen this time. But I'll say another thing. I'm glad that I did write it out because we were right here. When the wind slowed down, we jumped right back out and got at it. This storm has brought out the best in people. I mean, you guys have seen the community rise to the need. And I mean, in my mind, it stripped away a lot of the facades that people have. You've got people that are bold and mean, and when the wind blew, they cowered in the corner. And a lot of people that aren't so bold stepped up and were out there moving trees when the lightning was still striking. So it brought out a lot of good in people, but this storm has shown a lot of deficiencies in our community. A lot of things that should have been planned out beforehand and in place weren't. Little things like the trees on Highway 98 that were there for two days, had convoys of response people trying to get to people that needed it worse than we did, and they couldn't get through. It was one-lane traffic through 98 for two days. That is inexcusable. There's no reason. And actually, I got out and started cutting with my own chainsaw. I was so frustrated. And an EOC vehicle pulled up next to me and said, "We've got contractors coming." And it was two days after the storm. I'm sorry, we can't sit there and keep a road closed like that for that long, not when people are trying to get further west where they need the help. You saw the food kitchen that was going on downtown? That was run by citizens. That was not run by the government, not on the state, federal, or local level. There's assets that were there that should have been better organized besides having a group of people come up and start cooking on grills, trying to feed the power people and all these other people that were here to help. Now granted, Duke has their own city and all that. They were fed, but I can't tell you how many countless people stopped and got food down you how many countless people stopped and got food down there. Now we're hearing all kinds of rumors about generators at the airport that have been hidden away in a hangar, about mobile medical units that was turned around or turned back from the hospital. There's no medical at all. And maybe, maybe there was, and maybe there is, but the majority of these people, we don't know where it was. There were people that were hurt, a couple of days after the event, that had to be dealt with by people in the community. Serious injuries. And that's inexcusable. We didn't know where to go. You know, fortunately for all of us here, Verizon kept working. AT&amp;T's down, as you know, so half of us have cell service, half of us don't. And those who do have been trying to keep everybody else informed. But that again, getting information out during the storm, we didn't know what the hell really was going on. Fortunately, you know, we did have Verizon, we were able to look and see. But when it was all over, was there any information of where to go to get medical help? Where to go to get food? Zero. That's got to change, you know. Lord willing, this never happens again, to this level, but it happened. So it could happen again. And it could happen like Mexico Beach. So all I'm saying is that we got a community here that's pretty upset. We're alive, we're uninjured, thank goodness, but we're pretty upset, and some changes are going to have to be made, so that this kind of thing is dealt with better in the future. That's all I've got to say. I think afterwards, we're going to do some kind of an after-action report, and look at everything, and see if these rumors are true. And if they are, there's going to be some problems, because you've got a pretty upset community right here. And good thing, the metal detectors here, because we would have had pitchforks and torches. That's all I've got to say. You know, I appreciate, I know you guys have done a ton, and I appreciate it, every one of y'all. But I think everybody does know, there's been some deficiencies that have reared their ugly head, that are going to have to be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Kristen Bell, I'm sure you all know who I am. The only real concern that I have, is myself and an old colleague of mine, we're both ER trauma nurses. We had a few friends that got injured, had infections. There was no way to get them any medical care. So her and I pulled together what medications, what supplies that we did have, went around the community, and gave medical attention. The only concern that I have, is why wasn't there an EMS truck, some form of medical attention set up somewhere, to triage people? In the event that someone really, really got hurt, there was no medical facility, there was nowhere to go. Thank God, all of these people got together, volunteered their time, got resources, fed people. But my concern was the medical care. And if this happens again, we all need to come together for some kind of plan, to have a mobile unit. It's really not that hard to stock basic first aid. There's pharmacies here that we could have gotten with, maybe to get medications. So thank God, by the grace of God, everybody was spared, nobody was seriously injured. But if it wasn't have been for the few nurses in this community that got together, and helped some of the residents of this community, it could have been, it could have been bad. So next time, if we could organize a mobile, just an EMS unit, get a trailer, stock it with the supplies from Weems, if Weems was damaged. I don't know how bad Weems was damaged, the clinic, I have no idea. But I just feel like something should have been set in place, for people to be able to go to. There are people that couldn't get to their blood pressure medication, that couldn't check their blood pressures. In the event that someone fell, broke something, it would have been really hard to get, especially from Carabelle, to get over, to give them, to give them medical. And that is my concern. Next time, can we please organize something, a medical mobile unit, for the people of the county?
Thank you for your comment.
Yes, sir.
Mike, are you making notes of all this? Okay. Come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Jim McCloy, and I'm the president of the Alligator Point Saint Teresa Association. And I will briefly say something about the past, but I'm not really concerned about the past, I'm concerned about today, tomorrow, and the future. And I'd just like to make three quick comments. These folks are frustrated on this end of the county, but on the other end of the county, I don't know about pitchforks, it might be, might be something a little stronger than that. But as an example, you know about the road, and you know how frustrated the people were about the road before the storm, over there, with the dirt road and one-way and the red light, and I won't go into that. But they feel, right or wrong, and I'm not saying it's right, they feel left out, they feel forgotten, they feel you don't care about them. In fact, I've been in meetings where they say, the Franklin County Commission doesn't care about Alligator Point. They don't want to, this is citizens, I'm not saying association's saying that, but now they're all like that. And you all know, I don't have to tell you, you've seen pictures of the road, there's no road. The pictures of the rubble, that used to be road. And we can't get to our properties without walking and climbing over rocks. Yesterday, one of the neighbors said, you can't cut through my property, which means now we're cut off totally 100%. Okay, enough about that. People are frustrated, and when I was younger, somebody told me that in life, perception is reality. And the perception over there, their reality is, you don't care. One of the problems is that you have no presence over there. There's people over there running into each other, they're all down there around the road, there's nobody there from Franklin County.
I was there, Mr. Jim. I was there at 8:30 in the morning on Thursday morning.
I understand that.
So don't say nobody was there, but I was there.
No, I'm talking about setting up a, I'm not talking about you, ma'am, I'm talking about setting up a tent, where people can come eight hours a day, and somebody from Franklin County will offer assistance, or give directions, or that kind of thing. A terrific example of this is, is last Sunday, there was a message sent out from Franklin County, that you could go to Carabelle, and there was assistance there for water, and ice, and health, and shelter. We can't get to Carabelle. So setting up a recovery center in Carabelle doesn't do us any good. Why wasn't there one set, a mini one, set up at Alligator Point? That's why they feel frustrated, because the county sets up something that we can't get to. And you need a presence. I don't know what kind of presence, a pop-up tent and send somebody from the road department? I don't know. Something. We need information, we're not getting anything. In terms of, do you have a plan? Can you send somebody? How do we get, FEMA's not, I mean FEMA's wandering around, but they don't have a tent you can go to. They wander by, and if you happen to be there when they walk by, you can get information. But in every disaster I've ever been in, you have a central spot in the middle of a parking lot, and you've got FEMA, and all the different agencies, and you got, as the lady said, you got a medical tent, you got things set up where people can go, insurance, whatever. We got nothing. That's the frustration. And I don't know what the county can do, I'd be glad to work with you, but you need a presence. I'll set up a tent for you, if that's what you need. But you need somebody, and I realize, I realize, most people don't, but I realize, getting from here to there is not easy. But you could send somebody. You could send a representative, I don't care what level they are, that people could ask questions to. We have, we are contemplating having a public meeting at the church, next Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. But we're not going to have a meeting unless we can have somebody there to answer questions from Franklin County and some of the other agencies. I have not had a chance to talk to any of your staff yet. Anticipated, maybe this morning, some, I could talk to somebody, about y'all sending somebody over there. Not, I don't want a complaint session, we just want information.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Thank you.
We're making notes of all the comments. Public comment?
Alan Pfeiffer, Concerned Citizens, Franklin County. Cheryl, I know you care deeply about Alligator Point, and I know Jim knows that, I think many of the citizens of Alligator Point also know that. Tensions are running high, people are, you know, frustrated. I had an opportunity to speak to the Senator after he left. I think that we have an unprecedented opportunity in front of us. You know, the Chinese symbol for danger is also opportunity. We need, this Alligator Drive changed into either a state road. This is a time when I think that we should put all our political muscle, we can't get a complete repair on Alligator Point due to the rules at FEMA, that only fix, fix an immediate problem. They don't do mitigation. Sometimes they throw you a few mitigation dollars. I think we have their attention, for a short period of time, and I know you know this, but I'm saying for, as much for the public as I am for, as to you, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentleman, that we can't, Franklin County can't manage Alligator Point, Alligator Point Drive, Road. It's always going to come back, you know, we're going to deal with the immediate crisis, it's going to be another two years before we have something like a permanent solution, and then it's going to be gone in the next Michael that happens. Everybody on this board knows that. We have, this is it, ladies and gentlemen. We need to put our efforts into a permanent solution. The Senator said, there's a possibility of getting Department of Ag money from the federal government, to permanent mitigation. He threw that out to me this morning. I know there are possible solutions that can be brought to bear. We've got a two-step problem here, we want to get immediate access for the residents over there, and fire protection and life safety. But then, right after that, like never before, everybody needs to work hand in glove to get a permanent solution, that supports the citizens of Alligator Point, and also protects the pocketbook of Franklin County. And I just wanted to state that, I stayed for the hurricane, I provided some of the first pictures that came out of that. You know, I'm willing to do anything that needs to be done, and every one of you on the board knows that, I'm willing to do whatever it takes, make whatever calls that need to be made. And I really appreciate everybody on the board, and especially emergency management and roads and everybody. Our water department's just superb, I can't say enough good things about Duke Power. They came with tracked vehicles to go over the brakes, they weren't going to wait for the road to be fixed. They brought six tracked vehicles, so they could go over the brake and restore power. Wow! I've never seen a response like that. I know I'm going on, but there's so many good things to say, in the midst of all of this, that I just, it's from my heart, everybody that's been putting in their efforts and their time to make this happen, let's not let it down now, there's a permanent solution to this in the air, if we reach out and grab it. It's the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, I'm Bert Bolt from Alligator Point. We have got momentum right now, do you hear this in this room? High-leaning leader here, Senator Marco Rubio, listening to the passion that has been expressed in this room about converting that county road back into the state road where it should be. Let's think for just a minute about some of the justification that you can talk about. Think of the millions of dollars that we have spent here in this county, to repair that road, over and over and over and over again. And you've got the financial information already to prove what a hardship it has been financially to this county. Secondly, that road provides critical access for emergency care, and people who need to get in and out of that situation, it's critical about the safety and lives of the people. And the last thing is, let's think about this a minute. That Alligator Point Road, and all the infrastructure coming in and out, has been a host road for the state's own park, that we have been hosting for all those years. So I think those are good opportunities, and good positive points that you can make now that you have this momentum. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next public comment, come forward, state your name for the record.
Otis Amison, Franklin County resident. I'm going to jump back over to the Weems thing, because I've obviously got personal interest out there, wife's employed. Have we got that under control, at all? From what I understand, she's out there today, and you know, this isn't anything specifically directed at anybody, so I'm obviously a frustrated person, right now, for some reason or another. But my thing is, is it just, there's no sense of organization going on. I mean, you got the CEO that's saying, hey, we're going to possibly open Thursday, this and that. And then you've got people within administration, no, we're not, we're not doing, you know, because such and such reasons, they have their reasons, obviously, but you know, you guys hired a great CEO, I think he's doing a great job, all the employees out there seem to really like him, the nurses work hard for him, he's got a good grasp on what's going on, even before the storm. But there just seems to be a lot of undermining, and I know you guys are in direct control with that. There's some people within the administration, I think that you could probably say, hey, look, we hired him to be the CEO, he's the boss, do what the boss says. The ship will sail much smoother. If the ship goes down, it's on him. But we don't need a lot of backdoor stuff that's been going on. My other thing is, is this, you know, in the future, now, I don't know this is true, I can go dig, I can spend a lot of time and find out. But back on the trailers, you realize, we had thousands of people in here with chainsaws, not counting, I mean, we have professional people, but we had all of us on chainsaws. One accident, no way to get an x-ray, no way to get anything. Now you, I know that there are trailers, mobile units set up, that could have been brought in here just for a little, even if we didn't even need them, and we got Weems back going, we could have turned them around, got them out of here. Why did we hold that up? You know, that's just one of my frustrations, one of the many. And like I said, I'm not up here to try to, you know, punch anybody in the face, or do anything like that, I'm not, I'm not here to be argumentative. I hadn't seen my two-year-old in two weeks, so I got a wife out there that hadn't seen her baby. I mean, there was a lot of frustration, of course, but there's a lot of, lot of things that need to be changed, in that situation. I know Weems is, I'm an advocate of Weems. I think we got to have medical here, leading up to this, but we've got to, we've got to get that straight, soon, because we're still not really out of the grasp of danger. I mean, all you got to do is ride down the road, all it takes is one slight turn, somebody get distracted, and you know, we got enough debris right there, somebody could get hurt. We just, we need to get, move it forward with that somewhere. But, and that's all. I mean, I'm just, like I said, I'm not trying to be, you know, I'm not trying to throw mud at everything. But, but especially when it comes to the hospital, you guys hired a CEO to do a job. Everybody else needs to fall in line, and do what the CEO says, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comment. Come forward, come forward, state your name for the record.
Cindy Slater, permanent resident and taxpayer from Alligator Point. What I really wanted to say, I think Alan, and Jim, and Bert really covered it. I do want to reiterate, though, that the Alligator Water Resources District did an amazing job. We had water at our house 24 hours after the storm passed. That's incredible. And we had electric shortly after that, that's incredible. What we don't have is a road. And I've heard rumors that we had a private citizen offer, to create a road for us, and they went to the county, and the county wouldn't respond. We had a woman on my street, who went to check on her house, she actually fell down her stairs. She had no way to get to medical help, she had to have people carry her out. That's not right. You know, I got up this morning, I walked a mile and a half, using a flashlight, even though it was against curfew, it was still dark out, but I had to do that in order to be here. So you know how important it is to me, that we get our road. And I know it's important to you, I know it's important to Senator Rubio, but it's important to the people of Alligator Point, more than anything. So we really need you to push that through, work with whoever you need to work with, to get it settled, because it's been way too long, way too long. When you go home tonight, park a mile and a half from your house, carry 10 pounds of ice, a case of water, whatever else you can drag, and go home. And that's how we do it every day, multiple times. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward, state your name for the record.
Grayson Shepard was up here a few minutes ago, but I forgot to tell you guys, I'm on the board of North Florida Medical Centers, and as soon as I could, I got in touch with our CEO, and she assured me that we are going to put permanent generators at all of our facilities. We have Press View, Weewahichka, Panacea, East Point Medical. And in the future, as soon as possible, our company is going to get that center back up and running. Even if the power's out, we're going to have one of those big on-demand generators to, so they can operate it as a medical center. Obviously, they can't do heavy-duty medical work, but at least we'll have someplace where people can go, and maybe get some antibiotics, or something like that. So, you know, we've heard medical's been a problem, North Florida Medical Centers is addressing it, and we're going to improve our company, to be able to provide care during these kinds of times of need. So I just wanted to bring that, so it's in writing, for you guys to know, that North Florida Medical's going to try to do what they can. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question? What are requirements for y'all for storms shutting down?
For shutting down, or?
Yeah.
Well, to bring it back up, obviously, they couldn't open, because the first and foremost concern was the safety of the people that worked there. They're scattered all across the county, the people that work at East Point Medical. So obviously, those people have to be taken care of first, before they can go back to work. You know, when the power is out, they can't really open the center for sanitary reasons, I mean, there's a whole list of why they can't do it. And it's the same with Weems.
That's correct.
So there's protocols have to be in place, but like I said, with the CEO, we're having a meeting immediately, to do whatever it takes, to be able to get our center and other, like, so we've got 13 centers across North Florida. All of them can be impacted. But my worry right now is East Point, that's my center. And we're going to do whatever it takes to be able to get that up as soon as possible in the future. That generator should have already been there, and I got on the phone with the CEO, and That generator should have already been there, and I got on the phone with the CEO and said, this has got, we can't have this happen again.
I just wanted to put out there, y'all got a protocol for open and close, and that's what I was trying to put out.
Oh, for, well, I'll tell you, the problem with that is getting a provider here. That's a longtime problem. We need, I know, we need to take a break. We need to get out of here. But that's a longtime problem. It's so expensive. We can't pay a doctor what it takes to come here to live. They can't buy a house. We can't pay a doctor 500 grand.
I'm not talking about that. I was just putting it out there where y'all got protocols for when storms come to open and close.
Oh, we do. We do, but it's contingent upon electricity. As soon as the power comes back on, somebody has to come down, make sure the center is not, still has its roof on. Now, I went over there and did all that and sent them that information the next day. So they knew that the building was intact. But without power, they can't do anything. And once they get power, it takes a day to make sure to get all the bad diabetic insulin or whatever that's in there. That stuff has to be out and cleaned and then before they can reopen. Putting a generator there is going to speed all that up, so that's what we're going to do. That's it.
Thank you. Come forward, state your name for the record.
Greg Christopherson, citizen of Carabel. I think that citizens have a lot of good ideas for some of the things that they're concerned about, but I want to remind everyone that the county does offer training in emergency response, and it's called Certified Emergency Response Team. Mr. Pfeiffer's on that team. And I think that anybody that really feels like they have some good ideas or would like to get involved, those are the kind of people that can be out there on the ground as a first responder. So I think anybody that really wants to get involved in that and help contact Ms. Burnell and get certified, and that way we can all kind of work together. Because a lot of times when things like this happen, you don't have enough, I mean, you can't depend on the government to come in immediately. You know, you're going to have to take care of it yourself. And if you're certified, you'll know what to do. You know, maybe you can get involved and come up with a plan, or if you've got some good ideas, then they can get that implemented through citizenry. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name's Ron Nally, city manager with the City of Appalachia Cola. I appreciate the opportunity just to give you a brief update. As y'all know, these were certainly extraordinary circumstances. As someone new to the community, I have certainly chosen to see the best in our community. I watched several days as Danny at Tomorrow's and Rex's at the Owl Cafe fed thousands through their extra volunteer work. We appreciate you and appreciate the work that you did. I saw residents clean their own streets, cut their way out. I am appreciative of them. I also want to thank our city staff for the long hours and hard work. I want to thank the county. I want to thank the county again for their hard work and their extra hours, especially the Sheriff's Department and our emergency management services. Again, they left their own families to come here and respond to this disaster. I'm happy to report that in four to five days, all of our essential services are now up and running. Our water system is under a boil water advisory. We, like Carabel, are waiting on the test results, and we hope that that will be up and functional 100%. Our sewer services are back up and running 99%. We have a couple of small areas in our downtown area that we are still working on. Our roads, streets, and alleyways are now open to at least one, and most are open to two lanes of traffic. Debris collection will begin soon. As you know, our city hall was flooded out, and we have moved all of our services to the Johnson City Complex where we will start taking manual water bills and payments. And so we appreciate the public's patience with us as we move those services and start new operations. Our sanitation is under a normal schedule, and we appreciate the work of all of those folks at the point of distribution center where they can get ice, water, and food. We certainly have learned lessons through this, and we can and will do better. But again, I want to thank the community, thank the volunteers, and appreciate everyone and their response to this disaster. So thank you.
Thank you for that report. Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's Brady Harrison. I own two houses on Alligator Point. As everybody has said, you know, we have a severe issue down at Alligator Point with our road access. I just want to make sure that if the private citizen that's reached out to the county to, at his own expense, excuse me, to help clear out the road just so we can get four-wheel-drive vehicles down the beach, that somebody, I heard it was the county road department that this person reached out to, that they actually reached back out to this private citizen so that if the county can't get to us right away, that we can actually get some temporary sand road out to out there. So he's just going to go out there and knock out the debris just so we can have a clear path to get out there. And so I just want to make sure that the county's responsive to any phone calls that are coming in about the road to Alligator Point. And I know if y'all are going to address that later on in the meeting. But just want to make sure that somebody has reached out to the county on their own expense to make sure that they could actually help the citizens of Alligator Point get to the other, get to the west end of the Alligator Point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Ms. Chairman, if you don't mind, I know it's not protocol, but the man addressed, the person that is willing to donate some time, let Alan address that because he has been in contact with Mr. Mayfield.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, you know, this issue on the road, I don't need to reiterate the whole history. I will say immediately to you all, if we can get the governor and say to him, "Go take the road", that is the solution. We've been trying to do that for the last 15 years. So I appreciate all your efforts. Direct him to the governor and get him to pay attention, not only to us, but to you all. That is the solution we all are striving for. But immediately, Mr. Emory Mayfield of End Construction, he contacted me yesterday, and I told him, as soon as I heard the offer, I said, I think it's a great deal, and the offer is this, that he's willing with his equipment and his manpower, he has a big dozer down there, that he thinks he can push the rocks out of the way that are in the debris field trying to get to Tom Roberts. Essentially, the section of road, as you all know, that needs to be opened is from the damaged area there in the east to Tom Roberts. Once you get to Tom Roberts, you more or less get the rest of the way. So he's offering to go, and as soon as you all say yes, and I'm going to call him on the telephone, he's ready to mobilize his equipment to get down there and try and open that road up. It's not, I mean, he's going to charge us, but we've talked, it has to be less than a $10,000 charge. So I mean, it's not free. He wants to, you know, make sure the expenses are covered. I understand that. But he'll be using his equipment and his manpower to go down there and try and open the road up. The only caveat I give to you all is that all we can do at this point is make it a four-wheel-drive vehicle. I mean, it's not going to be, there's not lime rock coming to be put down there. You would be driving on the beach surface or whatever's there, we can stabilize. Maybe there's some lime rock mixed in with the sand, but you know, he's not bringing material. He doesn't have the capability to bring material. He just wants to open up the road so everybody can get down to their property. But it will be a four-wheel-drive track at best. There's not going to be any stoplights. Those are all gone. So it'll be four-wheel drive. You're going to have to go slow, and if you have the ability, we hope by the end of the day, if you all say yes, the road will be open. He thinks he can do it in three to six hours of equipment time. So that's what, that's our goal was today. If you all will say yes to this, then I'm going to call him right now.
The main thing is, is we've had those two property owners that don't want us nowhere near their property because last time the road was built partly on their property. So I mean, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to hold up until today because it's also a legal issue also. And I wanted the county attorney to weigh into it. But we have not been sitting here twiddling our fingers. We've been trying to get something done. And now Mr. Emory has donated, you know, has said that he would donate his time. We would have to pay for the equipment, you know, but that's good. And let me just say this, neither has the road department been sitting here twiddling their thumbs. They were out there Wednesday evening and Thursday morning, first thing, opening up Highway 98 because nobody could get down here. And that's the reason why 98 got opened up was because of Franklin County Road Department. So they deserve a hand, too, a pause, too, when you go to thank people. But you know, the one thing that I want to make people understand, you know, I listen to everybody's complaint. I try to help out. I try to help everybody. But the one thing that people in Alligator Point needs to understand, that for 20 years, we have not had a major storm hit all of Franklin County at one time. You had it this year. You had it this year. And it hit from Tilden Road, Indian Pass, all that way, all the way to Liberty County line, all the way to Walkele County line. So you know, it's prioritized. You've got to prioritize, and that's what it is. It's not that we're sitting here idly waiting on things to happen. We're trying to get out there to make it happen. But I do want to thank you, Alan, for communicating and talking with Mr. Emory because I know that he's a man of his word, and he will do what he needs to do. But anyway.
Let's get back to the public comment. Please come forward, state your name for the record. From here forward, if you've already spoke one time, say what you got to say because other people are going to be afforded the same opportunity.
I got it. My name is Jim McCloy. I'm president of the Association of Alligator Point. I just two quick things. One is I want to apologize to Ms. Cheryl because she does care. I didn't mean to leave the impression you didn't care. But what I, my point, my point was, Ms. Cheryl, was that 80% of the people over there didn't get to see you. So they didn't know you were there.
I was there.
I know that, and I've been told you were there. All I'm saying is, you need a presence. The other thing is that somebody from the county may be interested to know that the Alligator Point residents and homeowners communicate with each other on an application on a computer called nextdoor.com. If somebody from the county could be in that loop and see the comments that are made, might could answer to them because they're all talking to each other, and you know how rumors spread. If you could get in the middle of that, might be good.
Come forward, state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Robert Glazer. I'm a property owner in Alligator Point. And I just want to point out that Mr. Mayfield is a DOT certified. This man knows what he's doing. It's also to be noted that he also owns the marina, half of that marina down there. So, you know, he cares a lot about what's happening there. A lot of people do. You know, there was, you know, on this little app he was just referring to, you know, telling people, please come out, pick a rock up. We don't need a bulldozer right now. That's what we're trying to do to get this done. We've kind of been the redheaded stepchild, Franklin County. And I think it's come to a boiling point now where I think they're no longer going to accept that anymore. And I think everyone does care here, and I know Cheryl, it's emotional, you know, and for good reason. I take it to you. Yeah, we get it. We understand. But you know, it was brought up, you know, it's a perception that we don't feel like we're really recognized a whole lot here. But you know, the reality of it is that we are part of Franklin County, just a further away from it. So, but Emory, you know, if we can get him to get that road done, he'll do it right. He'll get the job done correctly. It's not going to be a half-assed job. It's going to be done to the point. And there is road base on that, on 98 still. There is some lime rock there still. So if we could do something just to do it, you know.
Well, he's offered, you know, I talked about the lime rock, all that sort of, I mean, he's offered to get his equipment down and open it up. We need much more lime rock than is there, so I don't want to mislead people.
I get it, but if, you know, we had to figure out where, I get Cheryl's house, and we get it. Mr. Harrison, who just spoke here, his house is on that dirt road, literally where he's got, you know, the road. You know, he didn't complain about that. He didn't complain about that road being in front of his home for the last three years. He's more worried about the other people and getting, and there are people, and there's a lot of people down there, and into the volunteer part, you said about getting certified, the EMT Hugh. There's a lot of them at Alligator Point. A lot of people stay connected through that app. The app is really helpful. But I know I'm running on here, but the work will get done correctly by Emory. You know that.
I'm just trying to get a vote, is what I'm trying to do.
All right, well, let's do it.
Come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm George Barr. First of all, thank you very much for all the help you've given. Thanks to all the volunteers, the communities come together. I have a problem with my business, Appalachia Cola Marina. We've lost our dock. We supply about 95% of the diesel fuel for our fishing fleet, so we are down right now. Jimmy Gander's dock is down. He lost his dock also. So I don't know what the capabilities were or are for the future. There is some fuel at Sepio Creek, but they only have a 1,000-gallon tank, and they're really not equipped for the commercial boats at this point. And they may make some changes to that. So I just want to let you know that we're passing on the word that we're down. I'm not sure. The other thing we provide is about 60% of the pleasure boat fuel, and we provide 100% of the Water Street Seafood Truck Fleet fuel. We think we can pick them up, and we can, right now, we're repairing the front of the house to at least get the trucks rolling for Steve. Just, so any help you can give us in rebuilding our place, I'd really appreciate it. There's only two dock builders in this whole county who are aware, and I'm not too sure how we're going to rebuild these docks and how long it can be down. But as you know, when the shipping season comes along and the fishing and everything else, people need fuel. So we'll work around it, but whatever you could do to help us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Now, the gentleman in the black, blue shirt, come forward, state your name for the record. Yes, sir, you. You got to come forward, state your name for the record.
Mr. Glazer said there's a road bed and a pile of sand on County 370, right there where the, right before the road is. So I think we should, we need to do this. There's already available material there when they go clear out the rocks. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of, there's already some material down there to help with the restoration of the road, the temporary restoration of the road. So that's all I wanted to state.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Come forward.
David Fokes, resident in Franklin County. So here we are. We have a lot of frustration here. And I think, I'm guessing and seeing your reaction, there's a lot of frustration building here. So I just wanted to take a minute to remind all of us, the greatest thing that happened out of this was we're reminded of our humanity and our humility. So I'm going to ask all of y'all, as our elected and appointed shepherds, that you remember that it takes a lot of humility and great leadership to recognize some faults and some mistakes, and be willing to give anybody and everybody an opportunity to help you solve those things. We're all here because we're tired and we're upset, and we want things to be different next time. But we're all here because we all want to be here for next time. So that's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Come forward.
My name's Jimmy Elliott, Commissioner of Appalachia Cola. One thing I'd like to address is the ability to come forward to complain. As Americans, we have that right, and a lot of our people in our country have died for us to have that right. And I want, I appreciate all the hard work that the people have done, and I appreciate Danny for opening up the food lines, and there's been more that I simply don't know who they were, but I know that there are a lot more that did it. People that know me know that I've been in a lot of catastrophes from Vietnam, Desert Storm, and Iraq. And these were the worst of times, but it brought out the best of character of our American citizens. I thank God that I was able to survive it, but I thank God also I was able to witness the greatness of the Americans. And I'd also like to thank Duke Energy for their people. One of the best-looking sights I saw during this was trucks from Michigan rolling in like a military convoy. And with the military, I've been to a lot of, you know, hurricanes and disasters besides the wars I've been in. But I want to thank the American people in our county for being civil and not looting and tearing up stuff and going with lawlessness, which I've seen in a lot of cities. My last hurricane with the National Guard was Hurricane Ivan in Pensacola. My company had just returned from Iraq, and we had to deal with a lot of lawlessness there. But as a county, I admire the way the people have handled themselves as brothers and sisters as God intended it. And I guess, as they say, that's just my two cents, and thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion, as bad as I hate to, Michael Schiller. I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda so we can bring this subject of the Alligator Point road up so we can go ahead and give some direction to Alan. And I'm gonna make a motion that we bring this subject in to where we can discuss it and vote on it.
So. All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Okay.
Get back to the business at hand. There's a lot of frustration out here. I'd like to say a few things real quick. As I tried to stay at the EOC and help Pam, there's a lot of things that people don't really understand. As I said, the information was not out there for them. The county road crew cleaned Highway 98. One man on a tractor, all the way to that county line going to Gulf County. Franklin County cleaned that road, not the state. We cleaned from the foot of Apalachicola Bridge, all the way across the bridge, all through the causeways, Franklin County cleaned all that. Right on through East Point, Florida, to Highway 65, Franklin County cleaned that, one man on a tractor. There are things going on that the county was responding to that was done by Franklin County, not by the state or federal officials. Having said that, Duke Energy could have been here two days earlier, but we had to clear the roads to get those trucks rolling in here. So the perception is that Franklin County was not doing anything. Franklin County was doing as much as they could do with the resources that we had in trying to make that work. I do want to commend Danny and Rex and everybody down there that was doing all the cooking. We appreciate it. The people of this community appreciate it. We don't have the ability as a county to set up the kitchens and stuff that was mentioned. We've never been through this before. It's easy to say, you know, in hindsight, we should have done this, we should have done that. And Michael has made notes of all the different areas that we need to improve in. And we will strive to do that. But we've never been through this. We've had a little water and we've had a little debris. These contractors that the county has that's coming in to clear debris, once we, and I did this at the EOC, and once we give them notification to proceed, they got 72 hours to get the equipment in here. It doesn't happen overnight. They can't get here overnight to start with. You gotta clear the roads before anybody can get here. So there was a lot of stuff going on within this disaster. We're not as bad as Mexico Beach, we're not as bad as Port St. Joe. If everyone's not aware, we're talking about Alligator Point Road, we had a washout. Well, Cape San Blas has three washouts completely across that road. So there's a number of things going on and we're not as bad as some of our counties to the west. I'm glad to see that our community come together and fed the people. Other people were shoving mud, other people were doing this, chainsaws, as mentioned. We're all doing that. Everybody in this room has stuff all over the yard. I had two trees down in my yard. I had to do my own cutting, besides work for the county, besides work for a business. As Mr. Marr said, he lost his dock. I lost 400-footed dock and it's still gone. We all have issues, but it's good to see that we've come together as a community to try to work through those issues. And we will try to do a better job as a government and as a community to be better prepared last time, or the next time. Just as Grayson said, if they tell us to go again, we're probably all going. I'm not going, I'm gonna be here. My responsibility is to the people of this county and I'm gonna be here. If I get blighted away, I'm gonna say, well, there goes a good soul. Because I'm gonna be here and I'm gonna try to do my job as best I can from Alligator Point to county line going to Gulf County. I've been working hard, these commissioners have been working hard. The main thing was logistics. There was trees down from Alligator Point and beyond, all the way across this county. And nobody could respond, nobody could do anything until you get the stuff out of the road to bring help in here. I was reading last night, talked to a fellow from Gulf County this morning. They didn't get no help till Sunday. Now, these people, these communities are destroyed, fatalities. Forty-eight people still missing, they don't know where they at. They got no help, no ice, no water, no nothing until Sunday. The storm happened on Wednesday. To me, that is very unacceptable. But logistically, they couldn't get through the roads. Highway 71 was down, Highway 65 was down, 98 is nothing but a big mess. The road is totally gone in several places. So the logistics are trying to get people in and try to provide the help that everybody wants. Sometimes, you know, it's not big government, it's the communities, such as what y'all have done, Danny, such as what other people in this community has done. And we all have to come together and strive to do the best we can till we can get to where we want to be and get the help here that we all feel like should have been here the next day. It just doesn't quite work that way because of logistics and other things. And I will tell you that the governor calls me every day. Called me 7:30 yesterday morning before I could even get a sip of my coffee. What can I do for you? What do you need? And all this has to be put in through a mission. Then the state has to respond to those mission statements. Then the federal government responds as the state passes it up. As the Senator spoke a while ago, big government, bureaucracy, red tape. Nothing happens in an hour, nothing happens in an hour. But I will let you know, on behalf of the people of this community, on behalf of this board, I've been working hard. I was not able to come volunteer for y'all, Danny, and try to help you cook food because I was trying to do other things. You know, I've talked to all the congressmen, I've talked to the governor twice a day, every day. The governor's staff, I mean, we're working as a county government and it's my role as the chairman to do all this. My commissioners are not even aware of all the stuff I was doing. Because if I take time to try to make everybody aware, I can't talk to my commissioners. I get it to staff and they tell them. But if I go around the community and tell everybody what I'm doing, I'm not doing my job. You know, my role is to be there and try to do what I can do to assist from the federal level to the state level to a local county level, trying to deal with all the senators and congressmen that are coming by. I met with Neil Dunn, I met with Bill Nelson, I met with Rubio here. All these different people are calling, offering assistance, trying to find out what does Franklin County need. Trying to work with solid waste yesterday. I sent a vehicle down to y'all to get that bad food you had, Danny. Sent them around to all the restaurants, told finally go to the rest of the restaurants, they got bad food, let's get it out, bury it in a holdall at the same time. So I'm working. This community, this board is working. I'm working on behalf of the board and on behalf of this community. So we're out there, working with Duke Energy, trying to figure out what we're doing there. There's just a multitude of things going on that is not on the public's radar that is happening behind the scenes and trying to do the best job we can as a small rural community with limited resources. And, you know, that's the way it is unless we double your taxes and try to bring more resources. Nobody wants to pay no more taxes than what we're paying now. I don't. So we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have. I did talk to family yesterday about Alligator Point Road, met with family yesterday at the EOC. I said, you know, it's been going on two or three years. And that's washed out again and y'all ain't give us no money to fix it from two or three years ago. That's not the fault of this board, it's the fault of the bureaucracy that you heard Senator talk about a while ago and the timelines and how long it takes to get anything done. We look on behalf of the road and talking to the governor and the governor's staff, they are hearing you call Tallahassee. They told me that. These people keep calling us from Alligator Point. I said, these people need help. This county does not have the resources to do everything that everybody thinks we can do. So the governor's office is hearing these calls that y'all are placing on behalf of the people of Alligator Point. He's hearing it, he's hearing it strong. I agree with Alan. I would love to give it back to them. This board has wrote numerous letters trying to give it back to them because we don't have the resources to keep up. I don't know how we're gonna fix, make a permanent fix out of that, but I just want to let everybody know that the governor is hearing your calls because he told me so. So keep calling. Keep calling. That's the moral of the story, is keep putting the pressure on to try to get some help because we do not have the resources of a small rural county to provide everything that needs to be provided.
Mr. Chairman, I run with board. We have four dump trucks in this county, four dump trucks is the total extent of your road department.
Capability.
Capability. So that, I mean, that is just, you think, oh, gosh, we should have more. But just the chairman said, well, in order to do that, we had to buy them, we had to rent tacklers. So we're trying to be fair to you all, accepting this time of crisis. Then guess what? We need 400 dump trucks. We don't have 400, we have four. And it's very difficult to do all these things that people want done at the same time. And we just had to allocate the resources. But the solution ultimately is for the state to afford to come in here just, and I did, I said this on TV, so I'll tell you all this now. For the state to afford to treat Frank County like they treated Gulf County. In Gulf County, Stump Pole, which has washed out, is now a state road. It was a state road about eight years ago, or maybe 12 years ago. We cannot get that same treatment here. We're very upset about that because why should one county get a problem taken and solved by the state of Florida? But they won't solve our problem. And it's not for lack of trying, ladies and gentlemen. We have done everything we can to get attention. So you all need to help this. Keep calling until somebody says yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, Friday before the storm came in on that Wednesday, the governor flew down here to meet with some of the local officials because he was worried. And as we were sitting around the round table, Commissioner Jones was there also. He said, does anybody have anything that they need to ask me or tell me or anything like this? Now, they said one word over the sheriff's office. And I said, Governor? He said, yes, Commissioner Sanders. I want to remind you, I'm just reminding you again, as I have for many, many years, that as, whenever this storm hits, we're not gonna have no road again at Alligator Point. He said, what do you mean? And I said, well, we're gonna be riding on the rocks or on, I said, we won't even have a right of way. And he said, well, you know, down, last year with Hurricane Arm, you know, I brought some road crews down and they put a road in in 18 days. And then he said, oh, by the way, who owns the road? Commissioner Jones says, the county. He didn't say nothing else after that. So y'all keep on, I mean, he's aware of it because I have made him very aware of it. As he did in September of 2016. He promised he would help, but when he found out it was a county road, he didn't. And then we did a campaign to try to get the state to take it over, you know, again, and it didn't work. We've got letters to that effect. DOT, Department of Transportation, does not want to take over Alligator Point Road. So therefore, they're not gonna have anything open to make it, make them take it over. But Franklin County does not have the materials, the resources, or anything else to deal with a road that has the problems that Alligator Point has. We don't. It has to be the state of federal government. It's just so bad.
Anyway, I just want to reiterate that the county government, we will strive to do better. It's not that we weren't out there working, but we will strive to do better. And that's all I can promise the people. You got a comment?
Yes, Chairman, I agree. For the hospital concern, it will be opening back up. I appreciate what you said, I think. And we hired the CEO, he is the boss out there. And whoever I got running him out, I'm going after that meeting and telling him to send him home for good. I don't care who gets mad or whatever. That's in my district, we hired that man to run the hospitals, that's his job. If somebody is trying to undermine him, tell him to send him on down the road. I don't care. And we're doing everything we can to get the place back in order. I'm working from, that's from east to west, not in one place, all over. And you give us a little time, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but we gonna, we gonna do it. We gonna do it together. I appreciate everything people have been doing. I left and went out of town. And I come back the next month, first thing I seen, first thing I smelled was Danny done done a cook. I ain't had time to go say thank you or nothing else because I've been running, doing this, running, doing that.
First one you met was me.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a landlord.
Yeah, that's right. When I come through the forest and got in, they were cooking in. I said, that's a good thing. We had no light, it looked like a bomb had exploded. And it was tremendous to see them out there helping the people. People need to work together at this time, not apart.
Mr. Jones, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate something that's happened the other day when we had the meeting at the sheriff's office, Commissioner Sanders and I ran. We also mentioned to the governor that he was fixing to lose the road between East Point and Caribou if the storm hit this area, and that was just a fact. He also didn't really want to talk about that either, but we did mention it to him while we were there. I just want to make the public aware of that.
I just want to say, Howard Neighbors and his crew, when they got through pushing for Caribou to let our village, the Duke truck was sitting at the back of the line waiting on Howard to get through. And the boys said, when we pushed it out, got the trees cut, we had one lane open. They started in and the people wouldn't get off the road to let Duke Energy in, so we had to turn around and go make a second push to get it where they can get in. They were sitting out there waiting on us.
He was bad.
Okay, so the governor's a deal with Mr. Mayfield's office?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to direct Alan to contact Mr. Emory Mayfield and work out the details and to have the road pushed through the second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion? Alan, one thing, on one hand, you're saying four to six hours to fix the road. On the other hand, you're saying $10,000?
Well, no, well, I had to have this cap, a bid policy of $10,000. Mr. Mayfield and I talked several thousand dollars way below that.
Okay, 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 I just wanted, I just wanted to get that straight because I ain't gonna pay $10,000 for six hours. I hear you, Danny, me and you both. Okay, so we're gonna have an hourly rate, taking four to six hours, that's what we're gonna pay, not $10,000?
No, 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 no. But I had to put a cap on it because that's our bid policy.
I could recite a story back from 1998 about that. Yeah, yeah.
Let's don't go there. We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries.
I'm gonna call him right now.
Alright.
I need to make a motion to let Howard help the state grade the Buck Sidon Road to meet their state coming.
The detour.
The detour section, they can't get so far down. And they said if Howard would meet them, they would help, you know, would help them out.
With a grader?
With a grader.
With a grader.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
That's a rule we, we, yeah. Yeah, it needs grading. I came down at that moment and it, get through that, but grading will help. And it'll help people with cars.
We were told by DOT that Highway 98 between East Point and Caribou will be open today. So that road won't be quite as important if that happens.
Yeah.
But we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries. Board recess five minutes.